Is someone joining?
If you guys are starting, I can't hear. Oh, there you are.
We're on.
Can you hear us now, Melissa?
Yes, I can hear. Thank you.
Okay, it is April twenty second. The time is ten thirty two A M. And I will call this city council special meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please, Fay?
Councilwoman Galsman. Mayor Bill, here. Councilor Woodruff.
Here.
Mayor Prochambiazi.
Mayor, Councilor Yussa.
Here.
Okay, moving on to one point two, presentation on the history and intent of the La Posta area project and potential growth areas for Durango. Turn it over to you.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much, Mayor and Council for the opportunity today. We're here to just do a presentation on La Posta with the history of the project. Some of the steps that have been taken, kind of what the intent is, has been in that area. We understand there's a lot of information going back and forth, and we thought a good opportunity for us as staff was to be able to have a presentation to the council, talk about the project, go through from how we see this project has been laid out in the process into which where we are today. And give a time for the public and the community to understand the project a little bit better, as well as answer any questions from the city council. At this time, I will hand it over to Scott Shine, our Community Development Director, to lead the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members for calling this special meeting to provide information to council and seek council guidance on next steps. The purpose of today's meeting is to review the history of the community's dialogue and approach to the La Posta area. As you know, the La Posta area in discussions about the possibility of facilitating development in that area through annexation and provision of city services. Are the stated factors behind the Southern New Indian Tribe advancing legislation at the state level, specifically Centerville twenty four one ninety three? This legislation has been framed as a response to the city of Durango forcibly annexing tribal land and allegedly trying to sneak this annexation through without anyone knowing. Our goal today is to respectfully demonstrate that this is not the case by reviewing the public record regarding the La Posta area planning efforts. We want to begin by stating that it is unfortunate that we've come to this point in our attempts to build a trusting and collaborative and mutually beneficial relationship with the Southern New Indian Tribe. The reason this current situation feels so out of sync with everything else that the city has been working on recently is because the city has a long heritage of building and maintaining positive, successful relationships with so many other partners. Partnership, building trust, nurturing community, engaging with diverse perspectives, and seeking win-win situations is at the core of how the organization is operated for many years. The city enjoys many great partnerships with federal, state, and local agencies, as well as the private sector, non-governmental organizations, and citizen groups. We are even enjoying a very productive partnership with the private investment arm of the Southern New Indian Tribe, the Growth Fund currently. The city has recently entered into two cost share agreements with the Growth Fund related to the Three Springs development and has also jointly sought millions of dollars to fund community-based projects in Three Springs. So something obviously went awry here, as the current tension and mistrust is clearly not indicative of any pattern or attribute of how the city operates. Our hope is that by reviewing the history, respectfully considering the tribe's messaging, and providing clarity around the history and intent of the efforts specific to La Posta area, we can reset the tone of our conversations and seek a way forward together. Lastly, by way of initiating our conversation today, we want to acknowledge the decades-long context within which we are operating. We want to unequivocally state that atrocities and injustices have been committed against indigenous peoples, including the Southern New Indian Tribe. Indigenous peoples were indeed forcibly removed from their ancestral lands, and we are all still navigating the fallout of this and how it continues to shape our region. As we reflect on and acknowledge that history, we also must realize that our futures are similarly intertwined, and we must find a way to build trust and mutual respect if we are all truly going to thrive. It is my belief that this is possible. This is possible, and that the City of Durango staff and elected officials are absolutely committed to pursuing this goal. So with that, we would like to begin with an overview of the community's planning efforts regarding the La Posta area. So just to get us all on the same page from the start, it's a quick context map showing what is commonly referred to as the La Posta area. As you'll see, the planning efforts in the past have focused on a large area that's outlined here. Recent conversations about annexation and provision of services have been reduced from this overall area to a smaller portion that's at the northern part of the La Posta area. But just again to set the stage, this is the area we're talking about when we talk about La Posta. That light litter dash line is the northern reservation boundary for the Southern New Indian reservation. This is a map from the city's nineteen ninety seven comprehensive plan, and it shows the La Posta area as a potential urban area. This is a document that's required by the state for municipalities and counties to work together and explain where they intend to grow in the future, where they are willing to provide services, and since nineteen ninety seven, this area has been called out as an area for urban expansion and municipal services. In two thousand six and two thousand seven, there was an extensive effort to draft what we call an area plan for the La Posta area. This is an approach that the City of Durango and other municipalities take to focus in on an area, illustrate its unique attributes, and plan specifically for the future of that area. So it's called an area plan. It's more specific to an area, lays out goals and objectives, states intent about the area and where it's headed. As you can see here, and as is true with all of our planning efforts, there was extensive public outreach during that time. There are all owners of property in the La Posta Road area were invited to participate in the process. Planning meetings were held, at least seven planning meetings were held in oh six oh seven. And the community was was very well aware of the planning efforts being undertaken for that area. There was a bit of a pause between oh six and oh seven, you remember, between oh seven and twenty thirteen, as I'll explain. There was a great recession. There were other things that sort of paused the planning process. But in a draft of the two thousand seven La Posta area plan, this is a quote that was taken from that draft document that you can read. I'll read through it quickly, but it says, once an area plan is adopted by both jurisdictions. So this was a joint effort between the city and the county. The La Posta Road area would be eligible to receive city services, particularly water. The city's policy is to extend water services only if annexation agreements and an area plan have been approved. Adoption of this plan guarantees neither annexation nor provision of city services. However, it is the first step to enable these possibilities.
Scott.
Yes. Of course.
Do we know who signed that document?
This was a draft. There was a pause, and then in twenty thirteen, the plan was jointly adopted by both La Plata County and the City of Durango.
Okay, so the tribe was.
The tribe was not a approving entity. There is indication that they were notified and involved in the area plan process. This plan was jointly adopted in twenty thirteen. That made the area a part of the joint planning area and is subject to the intergovernmental agreement on joint planning between the city and county. That's been its status since twenty thirteen. It's been in this joint planning area. It's technically under county jurisdiction. Development in the area goes through county development review processes and is approved by La Plata County, but the city is able to comment on those development proposals. And as you'll see, we've even extended some services down there in line with what was called out in this area plan. The plan talks about land use designations, so the types of land uses that could be developed in the area, development standards, road sidewalk standards, infrastructure plans for water sewer and other infrastructure and financing strategies for how to realize the vision laid out in this plan. And again, just a quote from the plan, as part of the planning process, the city made it clear that they would consider annexation of some or all the La Posta Road area in the future. So between twenty thirteen and nineteen, it was in this joint planning area, and there was really not a lot of activity. Three small developments happened and gained approval by La Plata County with city comments. This was an indication that the plan was not really financeable. There were there were ideas about forming a special utility district or a metro district to fund infrastructure that would have levied additional taxes on the area, and the property owners realized that that wasn't really a feasible way to go about funding infrastructure in the area. That was, that was a led to in twenty seventeen, an attempted plan update. There were a series of meetings and discussions about updating the plan at that time, but that did not advance. So we're still under, the area is still under county jurisdiction, subject to the area. In twenty sixteen, partly in request to property owner needs, the city built a water main, a large water main down the Posta Road and to serve animus airpark. So this shows city water mains that have been extended down the Posta Road to serve properties both north and south of that reservation boundary. These properties remain in county jurisdiction, but they have, if they have tied into city water, they have signed what we've referred to as implied consent agreements. Those are agreements that say that those property owners, by receiving city water, they agree that they will annex when they become eligible for annexation. It's a mechanism we use all over the adjacent to city limits to be able to provide city services, but not annexing at that time. So that was twenty sixteen up to nineteen. Nothing's really happening. The community is still realizing that there's a big need for light industrial business expansion opportunities, and that has really been the focus of the La Posta area since it was planned for was, this is a good area for business expansion opportunities, light industrial types of development, along with a mix of more commercial and workforce housing opportunities. So nothing's happening. Obviously, we we get into twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, things are more pressing as far as our housing needs, as far as the restrictions on opportunities for local businesses to expand. And there was this dialogue about we really need to be more proactive in opening up this area for development to meet community and regional needs. So the city and the county and the La Plata Economic Development Alliance jointly funded a sewer study to lay out a conceptual sewer alignment for this area. The the alliance administered that process to seek a consultant to design that that's conceptual plan for sewer. In the request for proposals, this statement was included about the tribe's interest in participating in that study to expand sewer services to La Posta area. This talks about trust land that they own further down the Posta Road, so that I don't know exactly how big it was, hundreds of acres that they own further down the Posta Road, and they are interested in having services to that area in order to develop that in a more intensive way than just by staying on county services. So this talks about the tribe's interest in participating in the sewer study. The final sewer study includes the summary of the process. The review committee for the study included representation from the tribe. They were provided copies of the final sewer study that showed sewer lines serving property throughout the La Posta area. So it's it's pretty clear there was awareness of the planning efforts being undertaken.
Did the tribe contribute any finances to that?
I need to verify that with the alliance. My recollection is there was a financial contribution from the tribe to that study, but I will confirm that.
So city, county, and potentially maybe tribe funded this, and the alliance administered it. Yeah. Uh, who from the tribe was on this? Do we know?
I believe it was their economic development staff member. So that was twenty twenty. Covid's happening. Other things are housing crunch is getting worse. Some of the property changes hands and a new property owner that owns a significant amount of property indicates an interest in doing both workforce housing and light industrial heavy commercial development that aligns very well with community needs and community goals. Obviously, that we're all trying to address and figure out how to navigate our housing needs and while also supporting local economic development. So again, the city kind of realizes that and based on past conversations says, let's really start looking at annexation more seriously. We know that these special districts, this this kind of one-off utility extensions isn't working. It's not generating the activity that we need. We have a willing property. We have many willing property owners who see that annexation can be the way forward, and so we've started some analysis of what it would take to extend infrastructure to the area, look at the impacts financially and on our on our ability to serve. And that kicked off a series of landowner meetings in twenty twenty one, both with property owners that were interested in annexing and with adjacent neighbors. We had six or seven neighborhood meetings to discuss development in the La Posta area. And in August twenty twenty two, based on kind of feedback from those meetings, we specifically reached out to the tribe staff. So that was about fifteen or sixteen months ago now and said, let's get together. Let's discuss future plans for La Posta Road area. You can see the timeline there. I don't need to read on, read it. That council knows that we've been earnest in trying to reach out and trying to have conversations about this is a feedback we're getting from our community about a need. We think this area can meet this need. Let's discuss how we can approach this together and meet and provide for mutual benefits for all of our organizations, city, county, and the tribe. We've had nine in-person staff and council meetings in the last fourteen months, and a lot of email communication that we've shared. We've provided all these records to the tribe and their legal team with a very clear record of talking about La Posta area infrastructure planning. The property owners wrote a letter saying they're in support of annexation. That was provided to the to city council and the county commissioners. So I think the intent of recording all this and sharing it is just to say it's it's okay to disagree with the approach that the city is taking. It's okay to not feel like it's it's what the tribe wants, but to to make accusations that we were hiding or sneaking around seems untrue based on the record and conversations we've all been a part of. Un- untrue based on the record and conversations we've all been a part of. So as we were having these conversations, we recognize that the legal landscape is complicated. When you're looking at reservation land. Um, and so we've, we've done research, we've been provided. Uh, legal statutes by the tribe's legal team and we've reviewed those. That's, we have been actively conversing about the implications of those. They've shared intergovernmental agreements with us that they have with the counties, sort of models that we could use. Um, this is sort of um, the overriding federal legislation that's currently in place. That was passed in nineteen eighty-four. And it, its intent was to clarify jurisdictional uncertainty and the reservation boundaries for the Southern New Indian Tribe. I don't think we really need to dig into this too much, um, but it is right now. What we understand governs um, jurisdiction of lands within the reservation. The tribe said that it's, it's an illegal annexation right now that we're pursuing with that, that. Um, and based on how this federal law describes jurisdiction within the reservation, it doesn't appear. That that's the case. We, we love to talk and learn more about how they're perceiving that, but. Um, this doesn't indicate that annexation is currently illegal.
Can I just make one comment, please? Yes, Melissa, go ahead.
First of all, I want to apologize for being off camera. Um, I'm post-surgery and so I'm not in a very good condition right now to be on camera. So I, my apologies for that. Uh, but second of all, Scott, I heard you. Say that uh, we wouldn't dive into this existing legislation right now. At, at some point, I. I just want to suggest that I think that this existing legislation from nineteen eighty-four is extremely important. And needs to be considered much more heavily in our. Uh, i- if, if we decide to take any next steps because potential state law could conflict with this. Federal law, so I just want to point that out.
Well, I think maybe to make any, I know later it's possible action, we might need some clarification on this. And maybe some basic questions answered, if we have that. So Melissa, maybe we can ask some basic questions.
Okay.
I think that, like interpret, I think what Scott was maybe saying is the interpretation. Of maybe what the Southern New Indian Tribe is reading and reflecting. Um, versus what we're reading and understanding could be different and that conversation might have to happen later.
I agree. And I think included in that conversation should be discussions with uh, our city attorney to help us better understand. Uh, this existing legislation um, at the federal level as well as um, discussions that he has had. Or discussions, uh, yeah, I'd like to understand the perspective of the tribal attorney in conversations with the city. Of their interpretation of this existing legislation. So when, when it's appropriate for those conversations, I'd love to have those.
I, I have a couple of questions on this legislation. I don't know if you want me to wait till later or if we should do it now.
Go ahead and do it now.
Okay, so this legislation, the nineteen eighty-four, is what um, Vice Chairman Cloud referenced a few times. In the senate hearing, correct?
It's, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Smith um, referenced it. Um. In, in the legislation, does it say anything about private landowners? And on, and cause there's the boundary, right? And then there is the Indian trust land, which is two different things. Correct? And so does it say anything about private landowners? That lies either one of those, do we know?
The way that the um. Law reads is it says, the purpose of the act is to resolve uncertainty over the boundaries of the Southern New Indian Reservation. And the status of unrestricted land on such reservation. Um, I think that refers to privately owned land within the reservation. And then it goes on to define Indian trust land. Um. Which is not any of the land that is currently being contemplated for annexation.
Could I say something here? Okay, so Indian law regarding. External boundaries and also being your trust land within the reservation, which is private ownership. It's really complicated. Okay, this basic law here probably will not give us the answers. So I think unless we have to go there. At some point down the road, we should not discuss this right now because we have other decisions to make.
Yeah.
And this is possibly gonna get really complicated if we go that way. So I would suggest maybe just continue with your presentation because this is way down the road.
Like, so I, yes, but. Vice Chair Cloud specifically references, and I just want, I just had a couple of other questions because. In the image that you showed early on about La Posta and where the. The boundary was, was that tribal land boundary or was?
That's the reservation boundary.
Okay, and does that come into the annex area that we're talking about?
There's pri- there's private property south of that, or of that reservation boundary.
South of it.
Being contemplated.
Okay.
And may I add one comment?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is federal legislation. And as the city of Durango, and even if we went up against that, we wouldn't even come close to.
No, I'm not asking.
Defining what the um, the boundaries are because that's way out of our view.
And I wasn't asking to go against the federal.
It was just intended to be a point of reference.
Yeah.
The concern that I had, cause I attended a staff meeting with the tribe's legal counsel that was present. And it was represented, just as it has been today, that it's complicated.
Yeah.
But by the time that that council got to the state legislature, it made it very simple. And, and concluded that we were in violation of the treaty of nineteen eighty-four. I'm having difficulty reconciling the state legislation with the federal legislation. And any assistance from the tribal council onto their interpretation in reconciling those two things would be gratefully beneficial. To me and advising you guys, because the way I see it now, and I've had multiple attorneys look at it now. There is great difficulty reconciling the treaty or the public act of nineteen eighty-four and the pending legislation.
Thank you.
Great. I think that's helpful. Thank you.
Uh, another, just some, some background information regarding annexation law in Colorado. Um. There are three ways, this is a summary document that Colorado Municipal League has put together. There are three ways that municipalities can annex. Land by landowner petition, annexation election, or unilateral annexation of enclave or municipality-owned land. It is true, and it's obvious, the city was facilitating annexation conversations and assessing opportunities. But it is not able to unilaterally or forcibly annex this land. That's, that's, that is illegal to, based on Colorado law. The landowners have to petition the municipality to annex the land. Again, the city was involved in those conversations, facilitating that, trying to understand what it looked like. But the term for forcible annexation, um. Doesn't apply in this, in this case, because there's no city-owned land um, that we can unilaterally annex. Uh, state statute requires a twenty-step process that's outlined in this handout for municipalities to annex land. That includes extensive analysis of the impacts, uh, public noticing in various public hearings before annexing. We have not, where we're at right now, we've not even reached step one of that twenty-step process. That is submission of annexation petitions. So this is all preliminary analysis, assessment. Engagement with property owners, neighbors, uh, other stakeholders to um. Determine the next steps. So I just want to make it clear, this is, and it's not as simple as a petition is submitted and then we act and it's annexed. There's all these steps in between that can take years to negotiate and work through um. The, the final outcome of an annexation petition. So I'll end with uh, the stated intent of the La Posta area planning efforts. Just to step back again a little bit more about, okay, why, why is the community have been having these conversations for. Well, nearly thirty years, over twenty-seven years. Um, what is the goals we're trying to address? Um, and you can see a, a quick summary here. Obviously, our, our area is growing. Um, we, we need job uh, opportunities. We need opportunities for business expansion. Uh, particularly light industrial warehouse, storage, yard types of space, which this area has been targeted for. Um, we've been trying to explore all, a variety of avenues for workforce housing. We wanted to integrate, we wanted to see how this area fit to integrate into ci- city development patterns and provide services. Such as water, sewer, roads, transit, and other services to minimize environmental impacts. In the La Posta area plan, it says the intent is to, to apply development standards to protect common interests. Create quality development and mitigate potential land use conflicts. That's why the area plan was created. Um, and during recent conversations that we outlined, there was even discussion about in those joint meetings with the tribe, how can we? How can we, after hearing about um, the tribe's goals and priorities, could we use this effort to. Uh, access water um, and address other regional needs through these development plans? That was explicitly expressed. How can we find ways that this will be mutually beneficial? How can we understand your desires and align this in a way that, that meets those? Because it is, they are, they are truly regional needs that affect tribal members, the tribe. As well as city of Durango, as well as county um, citizens. And just a few summary of some of the points, um. I don't think I need to read through these um, word for word, but this just summarizes the. Desires of today's meeting to try and lay out uh, the history, sort of the record of communication and what's been. Expressed and um. Tried to clarify any misunderstanding.
Okay, Scott, thank you. That was a good presentation. Are you done?
I'm done with that section. Um, we didn't have the second section about other potential growth areas, but now it'll probably be a good time to pause.
Right, you know, on point five. What was discussed at those meetings between the city and the tribe about annexation? Were, were those just emails or was that actually a meeting?
There were in-person staff meetings. Um, a lot of it was, you know, try and, you know, build the relationship, try and get to know each other and. Um, understand different priorities.
Okay, so it was back and forth about why we maybe thought it might be possible with the annex that land because of certain. Utility services.
There was, yeah, there was La Posta discussions or other discussions about Three Springs, Lake Night Horse. Uh, there were other elements discussed as well at those staff meetings.
So it wasn't just um, the La Posta development. Alrighty, thanks.
Yeah, shall I make a couple of comments on La Posta? Another question for you too. So I, I understand we need growth areas and La Posta area, I think. Is definitely an, an opportunity for the meeting to long-term. Um, the plan that you refer to, the two thousand and thirteen plan, it, it differs significantly from the current plans. And the way it's designed and everything. So I think that's, that's a key observation. And there were other concerns raised. At which I, I think you're aware of traffic, uh, green spaces, the need for school properties, but also more complex issues such as. The number of wells in the La Posta area and the minimum distances required for residential properties and how legislation may change in the future. With the increase, if there's increasing distances to residential properties and it becomes more complex. But I wanted to focus on the Southern Indian Tribe topic. And because in your presentation, you outlined how uh. They were involved with specific quotes in a number of meetings. But they also expressed concerns early on regarding uh, the reservation lands and all of their rights. And I remember asking city staff during council meeting about a year ago or so. If those concerns were uh, addressed or, or resolved. And I, I believe you, uh, staff mentioned that basically there's not an issue. But from this slide, it shows that the city and tribe are actively discussing the current legal landscape regarding annexation. So when I'm done with my little comment, can you explain in more detail what that discussion is? Because that to me is, is a key one, because this is not news, the legislation is news, but the concern is, is quite. Uh, well-known for a long time. And I, to be honest, I'm surprised and I think it's very unfortunate that um. This has turned into the situation we are now with the Southern New, uh, Indian Tribe. From all this, what I see here is, is really still not clear if this meeting is to evaluate. If we're going to contest what, what has happened in the legislature. Or if we can work with the current uh, legislation that passed. And annex less or go instead and stay away from the boundary limits. Or maybe better if we can try and work better to cooperate with the Southern Indian Tribe. So, and for that last one, I, I would be really interested to understand better what the topic is.
Just to point in clarity, the legislation has passed out of committee. Um, it is not passed and the legislature does not become law yet.
Yeah.
So it's a process and I'm not familiar with how long that process takes, but the only thing that officially occurred was it passed out of committee with unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
So again, this refers to kind of the joint staff meetings you may have. There's a lot, been a lot of emails, back and forth. You've been providing examples of intergovernmental agreements that the tribe has with the county and reviewed those. Um, we've been provided by the tribal staff with that federal law that was sent by them to us to have as a reference. Um, and that's just been part of this process is we, we prepare for the joint tribal council and city council meetings. Together, we, we say here are the topics that we want to discuss and approach these. Um. It, the digging into the real specifics and the, the terms of the law. That has not been the content of those meetings. It's been sharing information, it's been trying to say, okay. You know, and, and it's never come out, it's never been in either the joint council meetings or the staff meetings. A direct, we opposing intention until this letter to the mayor and legislation. That was never explicitly stated. It was involve us in the conversations, make sure we're aware of where you're going and, and we tried to follow through on them. There was never an expression of, would you get tribe consent before you went? There was never asked of city council or staff. If that would have been asked, I think it would have been a fair point to consider. That's what the legislation accomplishes. To, to, if it, if it gets passed.
Well, you could, you could see it also in, in that they raised these concerns for all the year. And they bring it up and apparently this bullet point seems that we're discussing it, this council sees it as a, that a discussion is ongoing. And they keep bringing it up, nothing happens. Bring it to the next step.
What I can explain, and I've had limited exposure because this is my first year. But as far as point number five, the legal landscape and concerns. The items that I recall being brought to my attention were water quality, air quality, hunting rights. Never specifically was concerns over annexation brought to my attention. It was just explained that it's complicated and often under the backdrop of these rights that are very, very important and we want to respect. And certain documents were forwarded about um, other agreements that had been forward with the county. But the first time that it went from being something complicated to being something where the city was being accused of violating a federal act. Was at the testimony in front of the legislature last week. Um, I would have liked to have known that they had that position at our staff meeting several months ago, but that just was not discussed and I don't know why.
All right.
And that could be my fault. But the fact is, those concerns were never raised to me as legal concerns. Even though these discussions were taking place at joint staff.
Yeah, it's, it's about a year ago. I think you've been on board for nine months or so.
It was in August, I believe.
So in that meeting, the a year ago meeting, I went back and reviewed my notes from that meeting. Cause that was the first time I recall there was any, like, I was like, whoa, why, what's the negativity? And when I went back and reviewed my notes, the only negativity that came was mostly from the growth fund staff, but also tribal council. And it was in regards to us diluting housing at Three Springs. And they were being afraid, they were afraid, and it was very clear when I, when I wrote this down that. That they were afraid that, that La Posta would dilute staff efforts with us getting Three Springs space two. And their housing, that their ability to sell houses and Three Springs space two. And that, it, it didn't, it didn't.
It was different.
Did.
I, I remember that meeting too.
Oh, that one was in March, the one I'm remembering, March of two thousand and twenty-two, three, two thousand and twenty-three.
So I, I do remember there was a concerns raised by some of the tribal members. And then several weeks later, a month later, I asked the staff specifically, are those concerns with the rest? I, I might have listened to fifteen other things. It's, it's okay, but the. It's, it's okay, but the concerns were.
Okay, so. You know, I was alarmed when I read, I read the emails and got notified that this was happening. Okay, but after reflecting on it for a few weeks now, and you know, I understand the staff works really diligently at these things. It was a lot of stuff they're not um, they're not Indian lawyers and the legislation is really complicated. From an indigenous perspective, this is another layer of protection for the tribe because they see there's a, maybe a little cleat, a little hole there to go through to see that somebody, some governmental entity is even possibly thinking about annexing part of the land. It could not be us. It could be some other town. So if we look at it from the perspective of a macro view instead of a micro view, they're looking at protecting their sovereign lands. Um, you know, it's not just against us because they found that this could be a possibility. So maybe we should also consider that when we're discussing this issue. And I know when I went to that meeting and I listened and they were concerned with development issues and you know, they have their own agenda. We have our own agenda. But I think all in all, we want to provide for the communities and move forward and getting infrastructure down in La Posta and developing it. You know, it's still on the books. We may have to, you know, go back to first base and start again, but uh, just a bit from a, a larger view, not just picking on us. They found something that could impact their tribal lands.
I, I can't think I could completely understand. I think we're all in support of that, but when we are directly called out in a senate hearing for things that we specifically did, I think that's where we're trying to figure out how to navigate this very complex situation. And it is.
And we shouldn't take a personal or a government.
But when she said like, I, I have a couple quotes here. Tribe has always had a difficult relationship with the city of Durango issue after issue. And I sit there and I think about Three Springs and like what we have done and the cooperation we have had, like the vice chair cloud intentionally painted the city of Durango in a light to get what she wanted. Fine, and we may not do everything right. And I might support this bill, actually. I don't, I don't think the city of Durango wants to take tribal land at all, at all. The way that she said some of these things, no interest in cooperating. Clearly that's not true. Um, we are taking a hostile approach. Um, in twenty twenty four, we have a city threatening to take our reservation land. They are threatening our sovereignty and our culture. Um, some of the word, the words matter. Like what we say matters and what she said mattered. And I want to work with the tribe and I, we have done, I mean, we got meetings started again after COVID when they went, I mean, Barbara Noseworthy, I, I vividly remember Barbara Noseworthy in August or September of twenty twenty two went to the pow app. And specifically asked to meet with the tribe again and again and again, probably six emails or so went through. I feel like I could pull up of, 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 I don't know if she was a mayor at that time or Mayor Bocham, asking to get these meetings started again. We want to work with the tribe. I want to work with the tribe. I think my North Star is like what is best for this community and what is best for this community is us working together effectively. This, these words, what the picture she is painting is not helping at all.
Okay, look, that's how I felt at our last, what? Strategic retreat. Every time I suggested something, it's like no input from the rest of the council. How do you think I felt? I felt the same way. It's, it's this D E I. It's written down in surveys, it's wrote down in paper, but when it comes to daily practice, it doesn't happen. But that's how you feel. Look how I feel just from being on city council.
Well, can I, can I make a comment? Can I? Okay, thanks. All politics aside for me, is anyone considering the private property owner rights? This is what is absolutely magnanimous to me and I just honestly, I, it's mind boggling. I, I can't believe what is happening. And the federal, and this is why I wanted to talk further about that federal legislation passed in nineteen eighty four. Because it was intentionally trying to stop there being jurisdictional issues that end up in litigation for years. It was intentionally trying to stop that from happening. And to me, this is the issue. I recognize that there are bad politics at play here, that there are feelings that are being hurt, that there is trust that is being broken. I recognize all that is happening. But very importantly to me is the fact that we have private property owners whose, whose property will become encumbered and potentially further encumbered in the future if this legislation passes. And it is in contradiction, in my opinion, with what this federal legislation has passed. These are private property owners within the boundaries of the tribal lands, but that federal legislation intentionally singled them out. And so this state legislation that is about to pass, if it does pass, has very serious implication on these private property owner rights. And that is something I think that we need to be discussing. It's hard. The politics are hard. The relationship is hard. And we will continue to address that. We want to address that. But very importantly here in front of us today is the impact on our private property, on the private property owners in this area. And I don't think we can underscore that. That's all I wanted to add.
Maybe I'll just make a suggestion that um, this is a, a special meeting. It's not a study session. So public comment is appropriate. I've noticed a couple of people in the room have wanted to make public comment. So I would suggest that you suspend the rules and then um, make some type of direction as to how much longer you can allow uh, council comment and then move into structured public comment. But that does require suspending the rules because we don't have a motion on the floor. It doesn't sound like there's a motion coming to do anything. You can tell we've heard from everybody in the room. So one would be a motion to suspend the rules and then it's up to you as the chair to regulate how you're going to take input from the people.
Okay, so no. So how much longer do you have left of your presentation?
Four or five slides, but the uh, intent there is to talk about other potential growth areas in the community. So it's a different.
Topic. Um, so let's give um.
Does it be appropriate to allow public comment for what was, what has currently transpired?
Because we don't need public comment on future.
Suspend the rules and take um, additional council comment and public comment on the annexation issue. You can just say so moved and get a second.
So moved?
Discussion? Can I get a roll call? Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yazi?
Yes.
It's up to you to chair to structure discussion how you see.
So we'll, we'll start with uh, council discussion. Each council are going to have five minutes. And then I'll open up public comment and then if we need additional three minutes at the end after public comment, we can do that. Does that work?
It does, it does work, but actually I'm really interested in hearing what the public has to say. It may influence my public comment. Or my comment.
My comment's very short.
But then I. Let me, let me just, so Melissa, I already made the motion. We're going to go this route and then you'll have three minutes after public comment if you want and we can add additional if we need it.
Okay.
Does that work? Okay.
Okay, my comment is still that we need to stay in our lane. Okay, I understand the perspective that Melissa is stating that there's property rights possibly within the exterior boundaries of the new reservation. Okay, that is not in the city of Durango. That's in the county. We need to focus on what is in the city. So um, right now, I will not, I don't think we need to discuss the nineteen eighty four law at this point. And then just remember, look at it from the uh, the larger issue to the smaller issue and try to keep some of the personal stuff out of it and all try and ask. So thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Well, or anyone, does, does anyone want to? A five minute? Melissa, do you have anything you want to say?
Sorry, I didn't want to turn on my camera. I definitely have something I want to say, but I um, I can, I can speak af. Did you say that I will have time after I hear from pub, the public?
Yeah, we'll have three minutes after public comment.
That's fine. I can speak then.
Okay.
Thank you. I, well, the one thing I will say, just a response to count, uh, Mayor Protem Yazi's comment is, you know, I, I do think that the dirt city of Durango uh, is influenced by this potential legislation. I do think it has significant long-term implications on uh, our entire region. Uh, therefore I do think it is appropriate to consider this legislation and have uh, us, you know, ha- have an opinion on this. This, this does directly affect our community. And I think issues that affect our community should be addressed by the council.
Thank you.
Um, I'm just gonna, I don't really have a, a ton of structured things to say. Yeah, just listening to the testimony, um, it, it really struck me, um, I think is disingenuous to what our intentions are. Um, I think that's kind of where I'm at is that I really want to make sure that we are working in collaboration. You know, my, my background in restaurants in this community and everything that I've done in this community is with that lens. Um, I am, I consider myself a bridge builder, um, and how we all collectively move forward together. Um, especially since the pandemic, we, we need great leadership and I think we have that here and I feel like we all care about this community so much that we want everybody to collectively advance and benefit. Um, and again, I think what was stated in the, in the committee was disingenuous and I can see um, there's a, a compendium of information that has been shown that we have collaborated with the tribe, whether or not it is to their liking or to the way in which they wanted it, but I, I, it feels like what was stated and what has happened are two different things. And I think there's probably two different lenses that that could be put on this, but from my perspective and, and looking at what has been done by staff has been in lockstep with the tribe um, in terms of keeping in communication with them. And I just want to make sure that that is publicly stated um, from an elected standpoint. Um, I feel like we would not have gone down this road had we not been in collaboration uh, with all the stakeholders, whether it's the private landowners um, collectively or with the tribe or with the county. Um, and I don't think we would have put so much effort into this had anybody been like, I don't know, this is, this is not kind of aligned with what I had, had in mind. So.
Excellent. Um, I'll just make a few brief comments. I, I said a few things throughout the presentation, but I think um, the biggest thing like Counselor Woodruff said is doing what's best for our community. And making sure that we are representing, you know, our constituents, landowners, the intention that we had behind this. I remember before I even thought of running for city council, um, one of my friends who was the mayor um, and I were sitting there talking and she was talking about La Posta development. And um, and bringing like how to bring new businesses into the region and that sort of thing. And that's before I ever even watched one city council meeting or thought about running. Um, it's been a topic of discussion in our community for a long time. It's unfortunate that it transpired this way um, at the legislative level. Um, and it's concerning to me that a partner of ours could go and say the things that were said. Um, and when I think about working together collaboratively and working together well, like that's not a partner that is, is in step with our vision and being collaborative. Um, and that is concerning to me. It's concerning to me on levels of other projects we have going on. It's concerning in a lot of different ways. Um, so I'm excited to hear what the public has to say. Um, we don't have a sign up, so should I just call on people? Does that work? Or raise your hand? I didn't know. I can do whatever I want. Okay, I can do whatever I want. So if you, if you want to speak, um, yes.
To give people on the record, if we have them step up here and I'll put a mic up there.
Okay, and we'll give three min, uh, we'll give three minutes for public comment if that works for everyone. And state your name. Oh, we, we're going to blind you first. And if you could say your name and whether or not you're a city resident, um.
Uh, my name is Tom DeHoodie. I'm not a resident of the city. I'm a resident of the county. I live on La Posta Road. Uh, I represent a number of residents on La Posta Road. And I just want to add a little clarity to the presentation on the development process to give you a better complete idea, because most of the residents on La Posta Road believe we've not been listened to. Uh, we have talked to four of the five council members, not you, Mayor Beal. We'll, we'll get to you.
Okay.
But essentially, you know, when words like collaborative, cooperative, building trust, engaging diverse opinions, when you say these words, they don't have any meaning to us. We've been shut out of this process for the last fourteen months. Uh, we've met with the city councilors. I think we've gotten a polite pat on the head. That's as far as things have gone. And uh, I'm not sure why we're frozen out of the process. We live there. Uh, and relative to the tribe, I mean, I can understand their concerns. Because I've attended some of these meetings with the tribe as well and my perspective on the attitude of the city, the city has a pretty smug attitude towards development. And I think when the city sees dollar signs, that's it. That's all that matters. And that's all I really needed to say, but I hope at some point the city starts including, once again, open the process up, let other opinions come forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else want to speak for public comment?
My name is Blake Frederickson. I'm a city resident, thirty-five, Jameson Drive. Um, I'd like to know a little bit more about that history of the Three Springs. Development and if there is any broken promises that might be out there or bad blood that's still left in regards to that. That's kind of the skeleton in the closet. So if you could, with the counselors and the mayor mind addressing that. Thank you. And staff as well.
Anyone else? Public comment?
Morning. Uh, Dale Waller, uh, city of Durango resident. Lived here for thirty-five years, been involved in many different businesses and some land development. Um, currently own land on La Posta Road. Um, was taken completely by surprise three weeks ago. But there was a bill presented in the, in the state. Um, I feel like there's been very good discussion with the city and the county um, community meetings. The history of what I'm involved upon, La Posta Road started with the county. Um, during COVID, um, for some needs we had were light industrial space, which that in the current uh, plan, La Posta area plan, uh, a good portion of this land is light industrial. During those discussions, I believe it was more the county that was suggesting this really should include some housing. We've got a real housing need. Um, so if we have a bunch of light industrial land, where do the people live? Where do they, you know, if they're, if the employers need staff, where do they live? So that morphed into a discussion of housing along with light industrial in that I'm going to call this a very small area of the La Posta plan. Uh, essentially from uh, the Casey Lane area north to the bridge. After those discussions with the county and, and their discussions, I believe, early on with the city, uh, it, it felt like made sense that this was more of an urban area and which had always been contemplated for, as Scott, I think, explained in the last twenty years in the, the Posta Road area plan. Uh, so the, we, we continued on with the idea of organization uh, as landowners. Uh, as landowners, we've we've worked together, um, maybe surprisingly, there's about twelve or fifteen landowners and not all, but most have uh been in lockstep about uh this area and annexation. It's our land. It's privately owned land within the tribal boundary. The nineteen eighty-four law, in our opinion, was clear. Who has jurisdiction over tribal lands and who has jurisdiction over private lands? This law in the Senate, um, as proposed, has no conditions to it. It's a simple consent is required by the tribe. We, as landowners, will be required to obtain that consent. If they simply don't get it, give it or ignore it, we don't have the consent, we can't be annexed to the City of Durango or any other privately owned land within the within the tribal boundary.
You can wrap up. It's you you can you can just wrap up your thought.
My last comment is on that nineteen eighty-four law, is the intent, the purpose of the law states clearly at the start was to avoid costly and lengthy litigation. That now gets passed on to private landowners, who will have to determine how to fight federal government and our state government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Three minutes. Uh, my name's Bob Wolf. I'm president of Amis Jeez, what is it today? The Amis Air Park Property Owners Association. Um, I've lived on La Posta Road for forty-eight years, and I've watched the tribe for all those years. Uh, I'm gonna, since I can't talk for an hour, uh, I'll give it to you really straight. Number one, this is not a bad annexation. Number two, I think Commissioner Beal has the right idea, support the bill, get over it, and never use the word annexation again when referring to this property. Change it to a special service area for La Posta Road. And do the exact same thing you would do in an annexation. Hope we have to be some things tweaked and get over it. You know, since that's a.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Patrick Cummins. I live at five thirty-seven Jack Rabbit Trail with my wife, Mickey Harder. Uh, we are, our property is part of the Deer Island Preserve uh subdivision, uh, which directly borders the proposed annexation area. Um, I, first of all, regarding the primary issue that you're addressing here today relative to this legislation, you know, I don't, um, I don't really have a comment on that other than really just the question, is it a bad idea? Considering that the vast majority of the land that is being proposed to be annexed is south of the reservation boundary line, and there are no doubt under any circumstances and under any way that this gets done, significant issues that the tribe and the city will have to work out regarding annexation, road right-of-way agreement that will have to be approved by the Bureau of Indian Affairs, criminal jurisdiction issues and many others. So whether the legislation that would require joint tribal approval of the annexation is a good idea or not, you know, I think that should be the focus. I know there's a lot of other things flying around, but but uh I think that's an important question. Um, regarding the annexation, I will just say in one minute that I and uh Mr. DeHoodie, who's already spoken, and our other residents who are here, we do not oppose annexation. We do not oppose development. We support the twenty thirteen plan that called for light industrial and commercial development down there. Our biggest concern is the very high-density housing development that is proposed. Hundreds of units, thousands of people down La Posta Road, essentially creating a whole new city with no with no amenities. Gas wells are shown on the map as open space. There's a lot of, so that so that is our primary concern. Regarding the process, I I attended the last public meeting, community meeting, more than a year ago. Signed up, gave my email address. I have not received one bit of information, no information about the next steps. There have been at least two briefings, uh, the ones mentioned here last fall and earlier this year, I believe. We were not given any notice of those ahead of time. There needs to be a much more transparent process that the press release, I'll wrap up in just one second, the press release that was issued for this meeting provided a link to the Engage website. I signed up for that. I went to the Engage website, and there was there was nowhere to comment on this. This is a major issue for this community. The level of development that is being considered is going to have all kinds of implications, and we need a much more robust and transparent public process to discuss what level and what type of development is appropriate. Thank you, and thank you for the extra time.
Thank you.
It's uh still morning, believe it or not. Good morning. Uh, my name is Michael French. I'm the executive director for the La Plata Economic Development Alliance, and I've been a resident here for seventeen years, and I live at sixty-seven Tanguo Drive in Durango, Colorado. From my perspective, the alliance has been a significant partner in looking at the development of La Posta prior to discussions of annexation, which was light industrial. We have significant need for our businesses to have expansion capabilities. We've lost businesses. We've lost jobs because of that. We've had businesses who are not able to find light industrial actually leave the community, um, leave uh leave the county and uh and jobs as well. Um, so the alliance has looked at possible development of light industrial for years. This precedes me. I've been at the alliance. This is, I'm in my fifth year. Um, and uh, and and I'm actually also a little bit taken aback because, um, again, precedes me, but the the Southern New Tribe, and I believe it was via the Growth Fund, was actively involved in pursuing the sewer alignment study and actually contributed funds to participate in that sewer alignment study. I think where things have broken down is um their interests in in infrastructure uh going all the way out to their property. Um, and things have probably broken down amongst conversations around Three Springs, which which, um, you know, unfortunately, this is not compartmentalized. I feel like this leaks into larger, as you said, counselor, macro issues, um, and that's that's unfortunate. Uh, as far as I'm as I'm concerned, I I believe that the city has been very transparent about the ongoing discussions of of uh infrastructure, uh sewer design, water design studies. The alliance has been extremely transparent. We've actually had the city come to alliance meetings and speak on multiple times uh doing that, and we participated in all of the open meetings. Um, and so I am disappointed that we're here, but I agree that um trying to figure out how we how we uh bridge the communications, bridge relationship, and actually have everybody in alignment of what's best out of the community is the right thing to do moving forward. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for public comments? Okay, we'll close public comment, and I will give councilors three more minutes. Um, if they want to go, do you want to start?
No, I am, I think in general, I I'm in favor of the growth areas, including La Posta. So because uh twenty years ago, we should have made similar decisions, so we wouldn't have been in the same position now with housing. And that's the first one. I I think there was some really good comments, and I'll split up the the topic here. One is the legislation, and I completely understand how that would infringe on property rights for individual owners if they have to uh get multiple consents or clearables and impacts. So I think that is problematic. And as property owners, I think, you know, I I it's not just La Posta area. It can be anywhere where that has an impact. So that would potentially require follow-up action, not only from the property owners, but since most of it is in the county, I assume it involves county commissioners. Um, and we, because we have the La Posta area, but should probably actively have a role in that too. Not sure what that role is. Then on the uh La Posta growth area and the annexation, I am I'm still not clear what we're trying to do, fight the legislation or change it or work with it. But in the end, I think we need to work better with the Southern Indian Tribe and get them on board, so we have a solution that's a win-win for them. And that's all I have from my, many of them.
Thank you. Melissa, do you want to say anything?
Uh, I'm trying to get my head around it, but um I'm happy to go next. I think that I would like to see the city of Durango taking uh an active stance in response to the legislation. If if for anything for the record, um, I think to me to me as one counselor, that's important. I'd like to, I'd like to leave these discussions today directing staff to um uh look into the nineteen eighty-four legislation further and how the current legislation um contradicts and or works with, you know, ju- an interpretation from our city attorney on that legislation. I'd like to have that on the record. I'd like that information sent to all the uh representatives currently considering this legislation. Um, I do think it has implications on the city of Durango going forward and other municipalities that may be impacted by such legislation, and I think we should have, I don't think we should sit back and not do anything. I think we should take a more active role in regards to the legislation. I also fundamentally agree that we want to work on our relationship with the tribe, that we want to have productive working relationships with the tribe, that we have ma- many projects to work with the tribe on going forward, not just La Posta Road, and I'd like to see that for the, you know, benefit of our entire community, including Three Springs and Lake Night Horse. We all benefit if we can work more collaboratively together. So I would like to continue that in in the best way we can moving forward, but for this current legislation, I'd like to see us take an active role. I'd like to see a letter for the record. I'd like to see our, I'd like to see us direct staff. Um, and we need to kind of sort through what that would look like if there was support from council, but that's my position.
Thank you.
Yes, I do have an opinion here. Okay, you know, I agree with Dave. I'm trying to be a bridge builder also. And I would like to move forwards with um city-to-nation relationships, because that's one thing that I keep hearing from like Melissa especially, well, let's force our policy onto a sovereign nation. I think we have to get over the fact that the nineteen eighty-four legislation from the federal government, that's the federal law. We're not going to deep within it at this point unless we go to the Supreme Court. So let's move beyond that. People who bought lands within the exterior boundary of a tribal uh indigenous tribal lands knew there were restrictions on that piece of property once they bought inside the tribal exterior boundary. I think we just need to accept that and move forward. I think we need to have light development down there. We need to get the infrastructure in place because at this point we need to provide for our community. I think that's one way to move forward. Thank you.
So, okay, I'll just wrap up. Um, I think that if this has shown us anything, um, it shows us how complex this um project and um issue is, not just, I mean, yes, tribal boundaries, the tribal land, the nineteen eighty-four, I think it is legislation, but then also even within the La Posta community, how there's some people that feel like we're doing a great job and we're communicating great, and some people feel like we're not, and so I feel like across the board, there's lots of complex issues that we need to dial in. Um, are we perfect? No. Are we pushing in the right direction? I mean, just even think about, like, engaged Durango, like was mentioned, um, we're we're taking steps forward. We're trying and bear with us and help us make it better, and I think we're all ears in terms of of that. Um, will we please everyone? Absolutely not. If you just can't, I feel like, but we can try to get better every day in terms of our relationship with the Southern Indian Tribe. I feel the same way, like, clearly this is a hiccup, a hiccup that I didn't see coming, a hiccup that I didn't realize. Um, Vice Chair Cloud felt the way she felt, but she clearly feels this way because we're not communicating our intentions in clearly or in the right way, and what can we do better? And I think that that's a step for us to hopefully move in the right direction. I do feel like we need clarification on um what that federal law is saying, or act, it's an act, um, is saying, because it was brought up by the Southern Indian Tribes legal counsel during the meeting. It was brought up by Vice Chair Cloud in the meeting. They're using that as as their reasoning for this, and so I just need to feel like, babe, what does it mean to you? What does it mean in our reading? And where can we find this balance? Does that, does that make sense? I feel I feel like it's important, just like Melissa Yusuf does, um. In terms of someone had asked about Three Springs, um, I feel like we don't usually respond to things, and I don't have a lot of time to respond to things, but we can actually talk uh council hours or after the meeting or whatever, just, you know, shoot a message, and I'm happy to chat, and you've missed me, but you can call me or email me, and we can chat too, always. Um, and so I think let's go on to other potential growth areas, because there's lots of options always, right?
So a couple of things, if you don't mind.
Yes, please, and keep me on track.
The city was um heavily criticized by a couple of the senators at the committee meeting for not having anyone present.
Yes.
And I wanted to explain that. Um, you guys have a policy that you cannot take a position on pending legislation without conducting a public meeting where both sides have an opportunity to voice their opinion about that legislation. So it would have been inappropriate for Jose or any counselor to appear at that meeting, represent the position of the city without having that meeting. That meeting is not scheduled, but it's not what this meeting is. But I have heard that you may want to move in that direction, and that if you may want to give direction to myself and the rest of the staff to help prepare you for that type of meeting. Um, if that is what you intend to do, you may need to give a motion to direct myself, and I might have the staff to research and prepare you for a future meeting about taking the position on the annexation resolution.
Will that happen in like three point one under action items?
It'll happen in three point one, and trying to kind of figure out where to place this in the agenda, because we're still on a presentation, and then there's going to be another item that I would recommend the council pull after this one, just pull it up. So it's not this break in between. Uh, but you know, it's it's, I think it kind of goes to where Counselor Bosmans was asking of the purpose and intent, and as I said in the email of this meeting uh for this meeting is, you know, we're at a part where there's a lot of information coming out. Uh, there's a lot of part where there's communication from staff, and we don't know exactly where the policy of the decision makers, which are the council, of where you sit as a body on this. And so this was an opportunity for the for the staff to kind of say, okay, instead of having all these conversations back and forth individually, it's part that we need to have a group to come together and really talk about this issue, because it's not something that's on a regular agenda, kind of cost us between caught us between two different council meetings. And I saw it when I talked to the mayor as an opportunity to say, let's just have a sit-down talk, and let's just talk about what's being said, what we've done, and where does the council want us to go? Do you want us to continue working on La Posta? Do you not want us to continue working on La Posta? Do you possibly want to take a stance on a legislation item? Without any of those types of directions, it leaves staff kind of sitting in the middle of, I don't know how to respond to property owners. I really don't know how to respond to uh senators when they're asking questions. I kind of have to go to as a city manager without any of the city. Well, sometimes people look at that and say, that's just not even giving me an answer. So that's the import, that's the purpose of this meeting, and I think it was a good time to bring us all together. Let's see where we're at uh and go from there. So I think if we can have Scott hit just to cut these last few sides on his other potential growth areas, you can make a motion if you so choose to pull up three point one, so that we can have an action item after this and actually discuss where the council wants us to set the priorities moving forward.
Okay.
So we understand the intent and the desired outcomes from pursuing um development in the La Posta area. So we understand the intent and the desired outcomes from pursuing um development in the La Posta area. If there, that became more difficult or there was direction, as Jose said, to, you know, go in a different direction. We wanted you to just be aware of what the other options are to meet some of those community needs. Um, just from the start, there's nothing, you know, that is at the scale of La Posta and. Um, I think the other thing that happens, depending on the direction we go. Development can still happen under the county jurisdiction. That has happened for decades. Um, it's not going to meet those stated goals of the twenty thirteen area plan. We probably have to revisit that. They have to have broader discussions, but that is a path as well. And um. So I just, uh, that's the, the reason we wanted to share these other potential areas. So first is, you know, either just a starting place or a um. Kind of interim step is the northernmost, about twenty-five acres is outside the reservation boundary. These are not the most active sort of landowners in the conversations right now, but there is some land down La Posta Road. Adjacent to water um that could meet some of these needs. Uh, it's a mix of mixed commercial, light industrial and mixed use, uh land use designation right now. So. Uh, no, I mean, it's mixed use can have some residential component, but primarily more focused on the commercial. Light industrial uh needs. That uh orange line is the reservation boundary, just for reference. Highway three uh is another area, again, not in any sort of scale, but is more light industrial, heavy commercial in nature. Um, it's already sort of chopped up and subdivided into lots, so it doesn't have the. Um, sort of cohesive ownership and and to create a a solid master plan or vision behind it. But that could be another area that has infrastructure close, you know, good transportation connections, other things. It does have a mix of, you know, residential down at uh. Uh, River Gate and down by the river, so there could be some complications there.
Do you know how many acres that is?
Uh, no, I can't do that level analysis. This is just, yeah. So other digital growth areas, again, you know, Three Springs, something we're actively engaged in conversations about. That's solely residential development, maybe small amount of commercial in the northern section. Grandview, again, chopped up already, some difficulties as far as highway access. And infrastructure extensions, but this was recently a big topic of conversation. We amended, you know, the county amended. Our land use plan to extend further out. So this area is covered by. Our comprehensive plan and land use designations there, so could meet some of those needs. More for light industrial and commercial.
Scott, if you would, yeah, just staying on this slide just for a bit, because it may help answer that question on Three Springs, since we actually have something notifying Three Springs.
Yeah.
Uh, when I got here in uh twenty twenty, one of the, the concerns from the growth fund. Uh, and the director and the leadership of that was that there was no movement on Village Two specifically. The cost was very prohibitive, prohibitive. Under the current development agreement. Uh, since then, we've had extensive discussions. We've gone back and forth. I think we're getting very close. Uh, to the ability to bring to the council a revised development agreement to which will help. Uh, the growth fund be able to develop this property further. Uh, we've also partnered in doing design of Wilson Gulch Road. Uh, which would connect into the Village Two Park phase, uh as well as uh looked at congressional funding uh with both. Uh, the Southern Indian Tribe and the city both uh partnering on that ability to see if we can get congressional funding. So. I can't speak anything for before twenty twenty, but since twenty twenty in those discussions, we have been. Uh, working with the uh growth fund specifically to really expand Village Two, to begin it to a part to where it could be developable.
And could you touch on um the growth fund came to council and asked the city to buy the land? And that they were gonna sell the land of Three Springs Phase Two because they couldn't pencil it out.
Yes, there was a, a part of where they were looking to divest themselves of that. Uh, because it couldn't pencil out and asked if the city would be a possible partnership or had an interest in being able to. Uh, to do that. Uh, obviously, the, the cost for that land was uh more than the city could obviously afford. But also, we're not, we're not developers, uh, but we were looking at different ways of how we pivoted, which got into. Hey, let's look at this development agreement. If it's not working and it can't pencil out, then let's work together and change that. To find an opportunity where it does, and that can cause developments for uh the city as well as the growth fund.
Perfect. And Mayor, just from the legal perspective, um, the growth fund has had requests from legal to identify the water rights. Um, that they would use to develop Three Springs, and I think we've been waiting in months for that to be identified.
This one's a little complicated, but Boto has historically served to meet the needs of more light industrial, heavy commercial types of uses. What we've been talking about and what we've been seeing La Posta as is, is allowing Bono to continue to transition. More towards like commercial office type spaces and those things. The, the light industrial uses have. Kind of steadily been moving out of there and different types of uses, county offices, school. Um, other types of things have been moving in and La Posta. Could be that relief valve for those light industrial and allow that conversion. Or there's an opportunity to kind of make a policy decision, say, no, this needs to retain its light industrial. Sort of warehouse yard type of feel and status, and we can look at options to avoid. Uh, that transition more towards office space commercial in order to meet light industrial needs here. That, we obviously don't affect land prices or prices of property. We, we affect it, but we don't control it. Um. The word is those light industrial uses, the storage types of uses, lay-down yards for contractors, those things. Are pushed out primarily by the cost of Bono right now. Um, but again, just. Trying to think about options when we're, when we're saying, okay, if we need to uh divert energy or change directions here, these are some things we can do. And that's really it. Um, you know, I think we could all brainstorm that. There's been, just historically, there's been proposals for development north of Durango. That's primarily residential and commercial. I've also been very contentious to extend further north into the Amazon Valley. Uh, Highway one sixty west is becoming more of a commercial residential corridor. Uh, residences at Durango, Twin Buttes, not really opportunities there for. Light industrial, heavy commercial. It's also got steep slopes, not, not really big lots. So this is what, in pretty short notice, we came up with as far as other opportunities. And I think it's why, again, the conversation's been happening for so long about the need and uh. On La Posta down that area also.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to move item three point one, possible action to give staff direction on the La Posta area project. And potential growth areas up to now.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, can I have a roll call?
Councillor Yusuf.
Sorry, uh, yes.
Deputy President Yasi.
Yes.
Councilor Woodruff.
Yes.
Mayor Bill.
Yes.
Councillor Bosmans.
Yes.
Okay, so what specifically do you need?
Sure. So I guess, you know, the first one of just kind of having some conversations with phone calls. Uh, to get clarity on the council and where y'all sit. Uh, is, and I think it was mentioned by Councillor Yusuf, uh, is this, is there any interest in directing staff to have this? Where the city would take a position on this legislation?
Um, and I've asked a couple of.
Sure. I mean, I think that's just, before you ask it, that's the first one.
Questions. Do municipalities of our size, do we know, do people typically have legislators that work for cities or?
Uh, there are cities that have lobbyists. I don't know specifically if I can answer in regards to like size. Uh, I'd have to research a bit more of like which cities and what sizes do, but there are cities, it is common. That cities do have lobbyist or legislative uh assistance.
Uh, we took a stand on in House Bill, whatever the housing one last year. Did, did we take a stand on that or no?
Through Cast.
Through Cast, we sent a letter through Cast. And so, and that's typically the extent of our. What, like involvement, thank you.
That has been, the only time I recall, there was one time we took a stand, I think it was a public safety. Item, and then after that is when the resolution was passed that. To uh that if you, before taking a legislative position, that you'd have to have both sides present. And I forgot which that one was, you may know, this bill on form, they'll bond it on.
Um. Thoughts?
Uh, thoughts on like.
Just as the legislation and should we take a stand and go forward with the presentation to get that?
Yeah, I'm willing to get into it. Um, I think we, we've already got a black eye through this. I think we get even more a black eye if we continue to push for. Um, not uh supporting this. I think if anything, we push for amendments to the, the bill as presented. Um, I, I think this is a lose-lose if, if we go um legislatively to say that. We wanna oppose this and I don't wanna lose anymore. I worry that people might. You know, businesses might not wanna come to Durango because all those guys um don't care about tribal sovereignty.
Well, I think right now, we're just asking, well, yes-ish, but we're, we're seeing, we do have a meeting or an agenda item that gives us both sides. To this bill, where we take a stance on, then we make that decision as to, do we support it or not support it, stay by it. Go and just at least testify, like what do we do? And that's where we decide that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I wouldn't be comfortable you taking a position on the legislation until I was directed to fully brief you on the implications of it.
Yes.
I apologize.
Here goes.
Yeah.
So do you feel?
I feel like we should get the information and synthesize it down so we can make the best decision possible for the community and how to move forward.
Councillor Bosmans?
I uh. This legislation is bigger than our little project on La Posta growth.
Yeah.
So I think um, I, I think we're not in a position to fight. The elephant in the room. I think Councillor Yasi um made a good point. Um, uh, it was known, or I shouldn't, I shouldn't, should be known that they were in the reservation boundary, but I do, I am concerned about. Infringement of, of property rights. But then, this is not city property, this is county. So I, if someone needs to fight a battle, it would be. But even then, it's also, it seems to be a lost cause to fight, tell the governor that kind of stuff. So I. I'm almost inclined to say unless a bunch of other communities in the state of Colorado. Uh, and counties take action or are willing to take some action, I'm sure we could be valid, but at this point, I think it's. It's not um money well-sprung for our, thank you, Melissa.
Melissa, Yusuf. Sorry, Councillor Yusuf.
Hi, um. I. May stand alone here. I, I would like to direct staff. Uh, to take an active role in, in this. Um, I recognize we're a little tiny community that potentially uh. People up on the front range don't really care about very much, but I think that this has long-term implications on our entire region. I think that it has implications on private property owners' rights. And to me, that is very important. I have spoken with several of the private property owners. They knew nothing. Of the fact that they were even in tribal boundaries when they purchased their land. Their land was never owned by the tribe. Um, and they, it was not, it was not recorded in their deed. It was not recorded in any part of their closing documents. They were completely unaware. I see this as an encumbrance to their property. And to me, it, it, it. It's legislation that impacts their private property rights. Therefore, I am very interested. As one councillor, in having a full interpretation and um. Uh, a, a, and downloading of that information to council from our city attorney. Um, more on that federal law and how this current legislation impacts it so that. In our conversations with the senators and with the, our legislators, we are able to. To speak to that uh from an educated standpoint. Um, because I think it's, I think that's what. We, I know that we are elected to represent the residents of Durango, but I do think that, that, that this legislation has. An impact on our community. So I am for taking a, an active role.
Thank you.
And, and directing staff.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Of course. I'm against taking an active role with this legislation because of the area passed out of state senate. The other side's probably gonna say, okay, it looks pretty good. You know, we don't have a lobbyist up there. Uh, we don't have lawyers that are in Denver looking at critical Indian law. It's very complicated. I think we should just take this one for the team, move forwards with La Posta Light. And let's not. Ruin our relationship with the Southern New Tribe anymore because we still have obligations with. Lake Night Horse and the Water Committee out of there. And right now, it seems if they went and lobbied the state. There's our state senator and. Had the diligence to get legislation passed out of committee, they're way ahead of us. And we're not gonna stop that legislation at this point. So I say no, let's just move forward with um taking one for the team and. Uh, move forward with La Posta Light. That's twenty-five acres. We buried down the sewer study there. I'm sure that. Um, our development department can make those adjustments.
So, okay, um, I think what troubles me the most is that the city of Durango. Over and over during that senate hearing was specifically mentioned. Um, by name on people that were against it, people that were for it, and then uh from the senators. Um, several senators specifically mentioned that they wanted the city of Durango to be at the table. Um, and they wanted to know what happened, why it was here, what the background was. Um, and so for that reason specifically, um, I'm going to say, yes, I want information. On both sides of the legislation, um, as one councillor and for us as a body to make a decision. On how we go forward, whether we have someone at the final hearing and when, why not. And so, um. I'm gonna support that just based on that. And then also, you know. I do want to make sure our constituents know that we are listening to them, private property owners, um, and that. And that we're, we have an active role at the table. Um, and so I'm gonna. Make a.
So I think you made a motion.
Okay.
Did, did you get a second on the motion? You should have, because you've been discussing it.
It was a, just a motion to move this.
Move it up.
And so now I'm gonna make a motion that we get um a presentation from staff on both sides of the legislative issue. So council can decide if we move forward, in what way we move forward with the legislation.
Well, I can tell you, you haven't brought it up yet. You don't have to take a position for or against legislation. You can also take a neutral position. But you can't do any of that until I can work with the tribe and reconcile their interpretation of these things. And that's what I wanna do. I wanna do that work in percentage. You guys, so then you can move forward in an informed manner in the legislation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I would really like to hear from the county what their position is before. We took the case, all the work. And so I'll probably vote against primarily because I think. The county should be first consulted. So if you wanna amend your motion to say start with the county, get their position. And then see how much money, time we're gonna spend on it, then I will vote for it, but otherwise.
I, I'm not gonna amend my motion. I want to, because the city was called out, I want, I want the information to the, as a city councillor first and.
I think, I think maybe the county could be a part of that conversation leading up to an official capacity of where we go or where the other. Um, I, I think you're right. I think they, their vote should be uh within that, but just getting information on one side, on both sides. To make sure that we have all the right information to make the best choice possible. I think that's all within our.
And I could comment that the, the federal legislation is specific to municipalities. The proposed legislation is not. So that's one of those things I need to reconcile.
Can you repeat that or?
The federal legislation is specific as to municipalities. Um, the proposed legislation is not. It just talks about annexations in general. So again, that's just, we need more information and I need to be in a position to provide it to you if you wanna take any formal action.
Yes.
Would you, would you reach out to the county and include that on, on your review?
I'd be too.
I think that's really key.
Anything else? Can I have a roll call?
Mayor Procham Yasi?
No.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yeah, yes.
Fairview?
Yes. Okay, anything else with the, it says staff direction on the La Posta area project and potential growth areas?
Would you like staff to continue working on La Posta? Uh, obviously, the direction can change. I just want to make sure that you still want us to continue working on the post of road development. No matter how the legislation falls out.
That's, I mean, for as one counselor, that's kind of a big um, question as we don't know how this legislation is going to fall out and what it means and what the interpretation of. Land is. I think that. La Posta is one counselor. La Posta Road is uh, an, a great opportunity. For us to check those boxes for light industrial and us chopping it up in turn, like in order to get the same acreage. Uh, doing light La Posta and Grand View and photo changing that scene around, like it seems like. So much more effort and and not even close to the acreage that we will be working for for light industrial. So as one counselor, I would love to see La Posta still go forward. I would love to have the Southern New Indian Tribe support with that. And if it's something like. But anyways, this is such a big conversation.
Yeah, it may, just to kind of help. I'm not like saying that you, we have to come up with the agreement or the white weight, the, the avenue to do it, just making sure it is on our strategic plan. Staff would continue to work on it, and it might be any, might be better to say, is there any other direction that changes from what has already been done in our strategic plans? On the Costa Road development? Or do we keep moving forward? Not necessarily uh. You know, talking on the annexation, obviously that part's going to change. I just want to make sure that there's not an expectation. That it's like, staff, we want you to stop. We want you to do something different. Or do we continue to go with the way that we've gone? How do we develop La Posta Road?
Can, can you clarify a little bit? What exactly are you working on on La Posta Road? What are the?
It's also maybe.
So, and I may address some of the neighbors um, points as well that they made. So the last neighborhood meeting was February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. And then we had the joint tribal council, city council meeting, March sixth, twenty-twenty-three, so a week and a half later. And that's where we got the. We want to be involved. We're interest, we're interested in what's happening on the post of message from tribal council. We have um, admittedly been in sort of a holding pattern because we've been trying to navigate and figure out. This exact issue. Okay, there's concerns. We need to look into it more. We've not advanced. We have, we have money to do sewer, water and road design. That's been sort of in a holding pattern with our, our contracted. Firm there because we're waiting to, to figure out, you know, what it looks like to move forward. So. To some of the neighbors concerns, that's why there's been a gap in outreach is because we're, we're doing our research. We're trying to figure out what this. Um, landscape looks like. Um, so we have a contract with a local engineering firm to do road. Water and sewer design. Some of that work is through the alliance. Those, that's really the main things that we're doing. We're, we're taking the high-level conceptual plans. For development down there and making sure infrastructure is designed in a way to accommodate that new demand. That's what we're doing. We're having conversations with the landowners about annexation maps and petitions and. Making sure that those line up with um, the state statutory requirements. Um, those are kind of the, the things we're working.
Maybe the other question is, whatever approach we're taking on the legislation. Um, what is the timeline for that? I mean, what, uh, what are we looking at? Is it going to take a year before we have clarity? Or is it going to be a week before Mike, Mark comes back with this uh, sorry, I mean.
That's a Mark question.
I feel, and I could be wrong because I haven't researched it. And you can ask Mark when he comes back, but I feel like it's moved up and then there's a meeting within the next couple of weeks. That will like do a hearing or so.
As we presented on the senate floor, it has to go to a house committee, or through semicommittee, has to go to a house committee, be moved to the house floor. As well, the passes both of those and it goes to the governor.
But we, if we want to have any statements or whatever, uh, the mayor explained, we need to be well-prepared. Waiting for. So that's why if our part is going to take two weeks, then is it really that big of an issue to? Stop everything for two weeks, even though I doubt that there's going to be.
The legislative session ends, I mean, May fifth or seventh.
Legislative session is in like two weeks. It would, it's potential that it could make it all the way through, but it's, it's doubtful.
Yeah, so I would just say, let's see what happens.
Well.
I still want clarity. I still want.
Before moving forward with La Posta Road?
Oh, like a. So you want to pause everything with La Posta until we get.
Is there something urgent that needs to take place in two weeks?
There's nothing urgent that needs to take place in two weeks. We just want to make sure that we're aligned in regards to the council and where they want us to go with it. So if it is a pause till May fifth. Until after the legislation, we can revisit it. That's direction and that's great. If it's not and it's just continue to work on and then we'll revisit back again in May fifth, that's good too. We're just wanting to make sure that we are in line with the council, that direction has not changed because of the circumstances in which we're in.
So you're saying pause for two weeks?
This is what I'm saying.
It's what?
Is it really worth talking about two weeks?
Okay, so pause for a couple of weeks.
I second that. But that's a motion.
I'm, I'm, there's no motion. To uh, I, I would say keep working on, but two weeks, wait two weeks.
Can we, can we listen to everyone's? Okay, go ahead, yes. Okay, so, well, do you want to second it and then we can have a discussion?
Second.
Okay, so now we're going to have council discussion. So what I would say is I think would be great regardless of. Regardless of the legislation, there could still be an opportunity for La Posta to happen. The, if the legislation passes as the tribe wants it to do, they would just have to approve it, is what they're saying. Now. I think it would be super important for us to know where the county stands if the city can't annex. So obviously, the city as a whole, we've been working on it. We want to annex it. We want to go forward. We want light industrial. We want to listen to, make sure all the landowners are in the loop. Of course, and transparency and all that stuff, but that's the direction we want. We might not get what we want. That's okay. Um, but I would like to know what the county's intention is if we don't get, if we can't annex it. With the tribal, with the tribe, Southern New Indian Tribe's intention is, if we can't annex it, like what is, it, is it, are they on board like they used to be? With the sewer and water coming closer up with the standards that we had talked about with the environmental sustainability, like where does everyone stand? Including the landowners who are there. Like, I would think it would be great if we could get. A meeting where the three entities at least can kind of get on the same page and be like, okay, if this is what's going to happen. For specific La Posta, not talking about relationships. I mean, we can work on those and continue to move forward, obviously, but like. What is the intention of everyone dependent upon what's happening?
So you want, you want clarity in two weeks or tomorrow?
No, no, I'm looking tomorrow. This is, this is, this is. Staff direction. I would like, before I say, yes, let's pivot and, and go and do Grand View and do. All these other, like, look at all these other things more in depth.
Saying that.
No, 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 I know. But I'm saying before we say, let's pivot and change direction because we do need light industrial. I mean, let's be real. If we don't, Three Springs Face Two, if we can't have businesses moving in with people moving here and our growth. We don't need that many more houses. Like, why were we spending all of our taxpayers' money on building a road for Three Springs Face Two? If we can't have light industrial to continue to fill those houses and continue to grow. But all, but all I'm saying is, I would love to know where the county stands. On La Posta. I would love to know where the Southern New Indian Tribe stands on La Posta and their land. And I would love to know. No matter what happens, where, where is the next steps? And so then we know if we have to pivot.
So the, the question is, do the city manager ask if we need to pause or not for two weeks? And what is your answer?
My answer is I want us all to get on the same page so we, so we know if we pause or we don't pause.
So what does that mean? What does that mean? Do we have another meeting?
Can I?
I, I just. Can I answer my? Can I show my perspective? My perspective is uh, to directly answer Jose's question is, I am not in favor of pausing right now. We have been working on this project. For decades, and I am not ready to say we should shift gears yet. I think we should continue to move forward and. Do also as Mayor uh, Mayor Beal is suggesting, which is, you know, over time, seek to see where everybody. Lies on this project, but let's keep moving forward. We have done such significant. And everybody has been a part of this, including the Southern Ute Indian Tribe, as far as the water, the sewer uh, connectivity project. So. We don't need to pause this right now. Let's just keep working, moving forward um, and um, and keep working together.
Okay, I've got to say something right now. Okay, the letter that came from the years concerning progress and just pushed it right on through. That's exactly what you're suggesting now. So I think what has to happen is we need to take a pause. We're not going to hear what the county or the youths want. We have besides ourselves what we want. We can't depend upon somebody else making a decision and then basing our decision on that. You know, what I keep hearing is, oh, we want to be in partnership, but then it's all, well, that just works fine through. You know, even the letter you wrote to uh, Chairman Baker, it was all good until you suggested, oh, but we want home auto lights there. And remember, it's buyer beware. If they're buying within uh, a tribal exterior border, there are regulations on what they can do with that. It's always buyer beware, and I don't see that we should be spending city money on. La Plata County residents, or we have to be concerned about city resources.
Point of order is the, is the motion on the floor to pause for two weeks?
I, I'm gonna, can I say something? I, I'm, I'm lost here. Are we talking about?
You made the motion.
It's not going to build a sewer line in two weeks. So what, I mean, it just.
Well, I guess I was.
Two weeks and then just.
What are we voting on?
We're voting on it where the.
It doesn't matter to me.
You made the motion, so you need to clarify what the motion was.
I didn't track my motion.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest.
Thank you.
We suspended the rules because we wanted to get public input. We're kind of sliding back into the unorganized discussion. I had a friend who had a medical issue, so I had to leave. Jose tells me that a motion was made and it got a second. Do I understand that you are now withdrawing the motion? Who made the second?
I'm.
Do you want to pick up the motion and try to get him?
I make a motion that we suspend this conversation for four weeks and by then we should have. A little bit better understanding of the, the next steps we take.
So point of order, suspend the conversation or sus, or, or to direct staff to suspend activity in La Posta? Those are two different things.
So, just to try to super organize again, he withdrew his motion. She did not pick it up as written, so that motion dots.
Okay.
So now there is no motion on the floor. There should be no further discussion unless a new motion is made and gets a second. So is.
Okay.
Alright, so no discussion until you get a motion and a second and something.
I make a motion that we suspend. The development on the first road for. Three weeks until we have clarity on. What Mark can find out.
Sure, I'll say.
Okay, discussion.
I think this is a, a proactive way to show that we are listening to the tribe's uh. Um, objections like, hey, we're taking a pause. I think this is a great opportunity for us to. Give Mark some time to really go in depth and get all the stakeholder, stakeholders involved between the county, the tribe. Landowners to really kind of come up all together um, to figure out what is the next move. So I think three weeks is not going to prohibit anything further down the road, but it gives everybody the time to take a step back, take a deep breath. And how do we collect leprosy?
Anyone else?
There's just, there is, a landowner can apply for annexation anytime. And they can submit a petition for annexation and demonstrate. In an attempt to demonstrate compliance with the statutory requirements of annexation. So we don't fully control that. But what you're telling us is, I, I believe I understand what you're telling us to do.
My interpretation would be that if you got that petition from the landowners, you wouldn't be able to take any action on it until the three weeks is run.
Okay, there, maybe statutory language that.
Figure it out. We'll figure it out. We'll figure it out. I say within the La Posta development.
Sure.
Yes, only the La Posta development areas.
Well, I just add, uh, yeah, I was just adding that I'm, I'm hearing that council is in majority support of taking a pause for three weeks. I don't think it's the end of the world. I think that before we change direction on a strategic plan initiative. Uh, that has been under consideration for decades, that that would take a little bit more conversation. But if the majority of council wants to support pausing this for three weeks, I would support that.
Yeah, I agree, Melissa. I think changing direction is a bigger conversation. Um, but with the hearing that just happened. Um, I think it's important um, that we listen to. The Southern New Indian Tribe concerns and then kind of get our ducks in a row. So, okay, can I have a roll call?
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
Mayor Procham Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Okay, are we leaving three point two there?
It's up to the council of which one. Yes, we can do it after executive session or you can do it now. It's your call.
So just finish everything that has to do with this topic and then is that, I'm going to make a motion to uh, pause three point two. Consideration of request from Chairman Baker of the Southern Indians or Southern New Tribal Council for a meeting on April twenty-fourth or twenty fifth. Sorry? Council discussion? On this topic, just this topic? The motion, motion to move it up.
Much to amend the agenda.
To amend the agenda and move it up. Okay, can I have a roll call?
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Procham Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, council, uh, bringing this to you. Uh, Chairman Baker uh, did send for. Uh, the staff member of his sent an email uh, on behalf of him. Uh, responding to the letter that was submitted by, at that time, Mayor Yusuf in regards of asking for a meeting. Uh, and he has responded back uh, that they would like to have a meeting either on April twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth. Uh, wanted to see if the council was uh, was in support of having that meeting on the twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth. Or uh, yeah, that's pretty, did you all want to have the meeting on the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth? With the tribal council. Uh, I know, I think when the mayor sent that letter, uh, it was before the bill had actually gone to committee, so I don't know if the intent. Uh, was, I believe the intent and uh, Counselor Yusuf can correct me or not if I'm wrong, was to have that meeting before it went to committee. Uh, but since it's kind of already gone to committee, I'm not sure the spirit of that letter was there. But again, before uh, calling the meeting, I wanted to ensure that the council was in support of doing that or not. We need to make a motion.
Are we with discussion or we got to make?
Motion to schedule a meeting or not is your choice.
Okay, so we have to make a motion to schedule a meeting, then we can have discussion.
Yes.
To make a meeting?
To make a meeting?
To have a meeting?
No, to talk about. I don't think we should meet.
Okay, so you need to make a motion, so make a motion to not meet with the Southern New Indian Tribe, not to.
Motion not to meet with Southern Indian Tribe because there's too much.
No, because just, just right now, we will have discussions, so just make the motion.
I make a motion not to meet.
Second.
So just for clarification, there's a motion for the city council of Durango to decline invitation to meet with the tribal council of the Southern Utes.
On the twenty-fourth or twenty?
Twenty-fourth.
And then there's a second.
Second.
Okay, so now council discussion.
Okay. Okay, now Scott, um, she indicated that he has been trying to get in communication with. The tribe to move forward on some aspects of the development. Okay, since they haven't communicated that, they've essentially. Walked with their feet, you know, that's over. Okay, this is just from my native knowledge, okay? And I can tell from Melissa and Jessica that there still are issues involved with. Feeling they did wrong by the legislation that happened up in Denver uh, last week. Now to move forward with any positive dialogue with another government, another nation. We're going to have to overcome our own. Feelings about how we feel personally with them. And I do not think that that's true. So that's the end of my discussion.
Yeah, I tend to agree. I think there's a lot of passion around this right now. Uh, and I feel that. Anything that would be said in, in a meeting so close to that testifying uh, to senate uh, committee. Would only inflame um, those, the rhetoric and it could potentially. Uh, lead to dissolution or it would dissolve. the rhetoric and it could potentially uh, lead to dissolution or it would dissolve relations. So I don't think anything beneficial at this point um, could be had. And I think let calm our heads prevail. Let's give it maybe some more time. Let us all really wrap our heads around, you know, having Mark do his his label in the background. Maybe able to come to this with an objective, open mind and how we communicate with our with our other community partners.
I um, I understand the comments. I um, on one side, you wanna say we have to get peace back in the in the system. On the other side, um, I could also argue um, we are not involved in it, we're not cooperating, we're declining their invitation, so we're not even starting to have a discussion. So I I can go either way. I it doesn't, I I would always entertain an invitation from the Southern tribe. But I understand a lot of arguments, so.
Just for clarification, my interpretation of the motion, as put in the record, was it does not prohibit the staff of the City of Durango from meeting with the staff of the the Southern Utes.
No specific. Uh, then I would like to amend that motion to also through the staff, because when you look at this issue, I don't think we've been involved in talking with the uh, youths on a staff to staff level, and the communication level has developed in the staff, because the staff to staff are the ones who are confusing the issue and not being able to communicate clearly. Because if they were able to communicate.
Okay, I just need you to do your motion though, so focus when you're gonna amend the motion, I need you to focus on what you're amending the motion, so we can say if we're gonna support the amendment or not, and then we can have discussion.
Okay, I'd like to amend the motion also to the staff. No city contact with the youths was needed.
So she's made a motion, she moved originally, so she has the right to amend the motion.
Right.
And you guys get to vote on whether the emotion, whether the amendment goes forward or just the original motion.
So does the amendment need a second?
It needs a second.
Okay, does anyone give a second to the amended motion? Seeing none, the original motion is still on the table. So just council to council is the the motion. Okay. Counselor Yousuf? I'm gonna apologize, I've been doing meetings for less than a week now, I've been mayor, so this is, sorry if I had hiccups, okay? Do you have any comments on the motion?
First of all, I think you're doing a great job, Mayor Beal. Very good job, this is difficult to navigate. Um, so the motion on the table is to not have council discussions. So I just want to clarify the intent of the letter that I wrote, um, which was to, just an out, you know, there was a lot of back and forth, so a lot of negative things being said. Uh, you know, the city in on our, in in the first letter that I responded to, it was really just clarifying what what the facts as we saw them accurately, to try to uh, clarify what we saw as misstatements. Um, and then they came back with a very diff- another very difficult letter, and so my response to that was let's let's just meet. Let's meet, let's work together, let's work collaboratively. Uh, that was the intent. It wasn't necessarily that I wanted to meet this coming week. Uh, it was that I recognized that to move forward productively, we must meet at some point. I agree uh, with Counselor Yazi that tensions are high right now. Um, and so to meet soon might be very difficult and potentially catastrophic. I have no idea. And yet, I'm in a conflicted position because it's their request to meet. They want to. I don't really understand it, quite honestly. I don't understand why they want to meet in the next two to three days. Because but so so many very harsh things have been said about the City of Durango um, by by them themselves, and so I I don't know how to respond, honestly. I'm I'm very conflicted. I I I wanna meet with them. I see that as the only way forward in the future. But I don't know if we should do it in two to three days, and yet I I I I look to Counselor Yazi because I I I'm very reticent to decline their request. I don't I don't know how to deal with that.
Thank you. Um, okay, so um, first, I I I'm hurt of some of the things that were said, and it's like kind of disheartening, cause you're like oh, like we've been, I think, no, 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 wait, I'm just, cause you said that I felt like you you thought that I um, was angry or my emotions were high or whatever. Um, and I'm it's unfortunate and I'm disappointed that we're here, and I think that's more than anything, like how I feel as like there was a few things that were said that I was like, whoa, that was a little crazy, but I none of those things affect my thought process. I was just at Mountain Middle School. I'm actually supposed to be there at one, I might have to call them and say that I'm not gonna come again. But I was just at Mountain Middle School talking to seventh graders about city government, right? And one of their questions was about like your responsibility as a council member, and I actually said, I said, I'm getting ready to go into a meeting where it it it's it's a bummer because I feel so disheartened about what happened and what was said in that Senate Senate meeting, that there's part of me that if I had like a big ego, I would be like and I think that's where politics gets in trouble, is that people have a big ego and they um, say and do things that's not for the best of the community. And so I hope that I, or I try not to do that, and I do think a meeting not just with the Southern New Indian Tribe, but with the county and the landowners is imperative to move forward on this regardless of what happens at the legislative level. Um, do I think that should happen in two days? Probably not. It feels very reactive. It feels like we wouldn't be prepared with the information we need. Um, I would like to respond saying that, yes, I do want a meeting, but I wanna be more prepared with the things that happened and have happened recently and the things that we're about to get from our legal, you know, Mark and like just information before we go and meet and and have a set agenda as to what is what do we need to get out of this conversation? What is our North Star in terms of what do we want as city and and where are we willing to go? And then how is the county and the tribe supporting each other? And if we can get that on the agenda, I'm, yes, I wanna now tomorrow, like in three days, whatever, if we're prepared, which we would be, but I want that meeting. I don't think we need a meeting in two days, cause nothing good would come out of that, other than reactive to what was said at that Senate meeting and how they feel and how we feel, is that what I'm trying to say? And I never mean to cut you off. I try to get the five minutes and stuff, so when you said that, I apologize. If I cut you off, and I will try to be better. Um, okay, so now we have three minutes. If we wanna continue, if anyone, no, we don't have three minutes. Do we have? I don't know how this works, sorry.
So did you recognize any council who wanted to speak on the motion on the floor?
Everyone spoke.
Did anyone want to rebut?
Does anyone wanna speak again? No? Alright, there we go. Then roll call.
Mayor Procham Yasi?
Point of orders, this is to refuse the meeting on the twenty third to twenty fifth.
Yes, the motion on the floor is decline invitation to meet on the twenty fourth or the twenty fifth.
So decline meeting, yes.
Counselor Yousuf?
Um, I'm gonna say yes as well.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Basens?
No.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Um, can I just have one request in that response?
You make a motion? Sorry, I'm just asking the city.
The motion carries four to one.
Yeah, that motion carries. Can we have a motion as to how we decline the meeting?
The formal process we're doing?
Yeah, like what we say. I think it's important that they know why we're declining the meeting, and I and I don't know if the whole council could get on board with that. I don't know if the mayor writes the letter. I don't know, Melissa writes the letter because she's the one that wrote the original letter and.
All you can say is that a council meeting, there's a four one vote to decline, to respectfully decline the invitation. If you wanna follow up with that individually, you could, but trying to get all of the council on one page of the wording beyond what occurred at this meeting, I I wouldn't endeavor into that. There's a record being made here today, and there's a vote here today.
Yeah.
That will speak for itself.
Can we reiterate? Can we reiterate some of the comments made during our discussion, which is that we recognize that we want to meet with the tribe? We 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 do want to meet with the tribe, because we recognize that's the only way to collaboratively move forward. But we need a little bit more time to do some information gathering.
Question, so individual counselors can reach out to the tribe, obviously, at any time. The mayor, Melissa, when Melissa was the mayor, she sent a letter to Chairman Baker, two letters just herself. So Melissa or the mayor or any one of us could send a letter to Chairman Baker as.
There's never any restriction on you as individual elected officials communicating with elected officials from other governments. What you're prohibited from doing is reporting to communicate on behalf of the entire council. The entire council has declined an invitation by a four one vote, and that's what needs to be communicated by the council. And you as the mayor, as the spokesperson of the council, that's what you would say, but I would recommend you limit it to just that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
If, can I, given that further clarification of what we're going to be saying in the letter, and we're just basically only declining the meeting, that 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 is different to me. Um, because I've been in communication with them in my past emails. And if if that is the case, and I I'm in a situation where I'm actually just gonna say, no, Chairman Baker, we don't wanna meet with you, then I I I would like to change my motion to a no. And so it will be three to two, because I'm very uncomfortable with that. I find it disrespectful. And um, I it just doesn't, it doesn't feel like the tone of the letter that I was trying to communicate, which is I want to meet with you. Um, I want to productively try to meet, to collaboratively move forward. And if we're just gonna say no, then I I don't support that. I would only support a letter that said no. If it said no, because we need more information and we would like to meet with you, and we suggest that we meet with you in three weeks uh, or something. But if to just say no, I I I would like to have my name removed.
That's not procedurally correct, but you can make a motion to reconsider the vote. You can interpret it that way. So there's a motion for reconsider the vote made by Counselor Yousuf.
Counselor Yazi?
No, cause she's.
She says she wants to change her vote. She can't do a vote, but you can you can reconsider the motion, and she can change her vote if they're good, cause if there's a second for her.
So she. And I just wanna clarify that I'm reconsidering it based on the fact that this letter is basically just gonna say, no, we will not meet with you, with no explanation as to why, or um, you know, any type of collaborative effort to move forward productively. Uh, I just, I find that such a disrespectful letter to send that I don't want my name attached to that.
Okay, so is it only to reconsider the original motion that?
Correct.
Okay, so no amendments?
I mean, it is within the mayor's authority as a spokesperson for the council to add language to that letter. But you're in very, very gray areas when you're asking someone to interpret everything that was said at this meeting. The only legislative authority to do is communicate the vote. She can certainly say there was extensive discussion, but getting into what that discussion was gets very, very nerdy. And I gotta stop because you you have a motion being made to reconsider the vote that was taken. That would need a second and then a majority vote, and then you would conduct another vote on the original motion. So where you are procedurally is, you have a motion on the floor to reconsider the vote on declining the invitation.
Okay.
Need a second.
Yes. Do we have a second?
But he, but Bolivia probably couldn't, because he voted no on the original.
Right.
No, it doesn't matter. Okay. Uh, I'll second.
Okay, we have a vote and a second. Council discussion?
So again, I just reiterate on this, that for me, it's just, I I for me, it's just a, I I'm I'm trying to be respectful. I'm trying to save the, to leave room to work collaboratively with them going forward. So in my, in my, I I'm trying to do what I think is best in in respecting um, respecting the tribe. Like, I wanna work with them productively and collaboratively going forward and to just I just, I'm I'm really concerned about the message that we're sending by declining this meeting. I recognize, uh, you know, I I I kind of was taking Counselor Yazi's lead here, because uh, you know, she 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 understands, I think, more than we do. Uh, but I'm I I feel uncomfortable. I feel uncomfortable with that message without really thorough explanation as to why we're saying that. Um, and to me, it feels disrespectful. So uh, if more than anything, if you guys would allow me, just personally, since I was the one that wrote those other two letters.
So it's just about redoing the the vote.
I I'm suggesting that in redoing this vote, it allows me to remove my name, because I don't feel comfortable with it. That's what I'm asking for.
Alright, so you're, any other council discussion?
Yes, I have discussion on this. Okay, so you would like to reconsider your vote, because you think that just sticking to the facts is is not the way you would like to communicate with the Southern Ute tribe. Okay, now your letter to Chairman Baker, it was all good until you said receive the inclusion of private property landowners in La Posta Road to be essential to this dialogue. So I'm confused here. First, you wanna set up a meeting with the chairman, but you have your own role set up before we get to meet with you. And now you're saying you wanna be neutral because this might reflect badly on you. It already reflects badly on you this first letter you wrote because of that sentence in there when you're already setting up the pretense for why we should be meeting. That's my discussion.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we'll go to firgle call. And to clarify, the motion is.
It's a motion to reconsider.
To reconsider, should we reconsider the vote?
Counselor Basens?
No.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yeah.
Mayor Procham Yasi?
No.
Counselor Yousuf?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're reconsidering.
Carries three to two.
The motion carries three to two.
Need a new motion.
No, we're reconsidering the motion, the original motion, so it's still Counselor Yazi's motion to move forward.
So the motion to decline the invitation.
To decline the invitation to meet with the Southern New Indian Tribe, and then we.
It's on the floor for reconsider.
It's on the floor for reconsideration.
Is there any possibility to add an amendment to this motion?
Yep, you guys are getting deep into Robert's rules on it. Yeah, I mean, you can offer an amendment, because it's on the floor again.
Okay. Maybe Melissa would like to create an amendment?
Oh, uh, there you go. That, I thought you were gonna do it. Um, uh, the only way I would feel comfortable uh, in signing this letter is if it suggested in the letter that we recognize that we, uh, as a city council, we want to work productively with the tribe. Uh, we recognize that we have a history, uh, you know, especially recently of working together, that we have very important projects in front of us that we want to work on and and that we look forward to meeting with you. However, we we need a couple of weeks to get some information from our city attorney on the legislation that is being considered, um, and um, we'd like to defer that meeting for a couple of weeks.
So as I understand the amendment, it's to decline the invitation, but provide an explanation um, as discussed in the meeting and directing the mayor to write that way.
Second.
To, do you hear approval for that or no? I'm sure you're so confused.
We're okay. It's it's someone has offered an amendment to.
And then a second.
To, was your original motion, right? Yeah, so you need to accept the amendment. Um, if you don't, then it dies and they can just bring it back as a full motion.
I decline.
Okay, so that dies, and then do we have a vote?
So the original motion goes back on the floor.
Okay, original motion's back on the floor to decline the meeting. Do I have a second? Just simple, hearing hearing none, that motion dies. I'm gonna make a motion to decline the request of Chairman Baker of the Southern New Indian Tribal Council for a meeting on April twenty fourth or twenty fifth citing we cited our cooperation in wanting a meeting and what was discussed here at this meeting in terms of needing some time, a couple, a few weeks and wanting to have a structure for a collaborative meeting.
Second.
Council discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Yousuf?
Yes.
Mayor Procham Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Basens?
No.
Okay. That's done. Now we have. That's done, now we have executive session.
The easy one.
Oh, right, all right, oh, um, okay, so the executive session is um. To receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS twenty four dash six dash four oh two B. Concerning threatened litigation by John Simpson received on April fifteenth, twenty twenty four, do I have a motion?
Uh, move to convene an executive session to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS twenty four dash six dash four oh two B. Concerning threat litigation by John Simpson received on April fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
Got a second?
Second.
Roll call. Mayor Prasham Yasi?
Yes.
Counsel Woodruff?
Yeah.
Counsel Yussa?
Yes.
Counsel Bosman?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna leave and reconvene into the other meeting, correct?
Hang on one second, Mark decides to say something. Oh, no. Oh, no, I thought you have to go to a restroom. Yeah. Yes, Melissa, that's correct. Yes, go to the other executive session, thank you, I need to pull my.
Are are we taking five minutes?
Um, yeah, let's take five minutes and use the restroom and I need to pull. Yes.
Okay. You know, he was like slammed back. He's here. Well. The name's Jonathan. Yeah, she's he's admitting her, you know. He was just. Okay, the time is now one oh eight and the executive session is in recess. The participants in the executive session were Mark Morgan, Jose Madrigal, Olivier Bosman, Dave Woodruff, Gilda Yasi and Melissa Yousef and myself. For the record, council met in executive session to receive legal advice on the specific legal questions pursuant to C R C R S twenty four dash six dash four oh two D concerning threat and litigation by John Simpson received on April fifteenth, twenty twenty four. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that there's any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session session and violation of the meeting law, I would ask that you state your record concerns for the record. See none. We came into recess for this executive session because one of the previous executive sessions that we had regarding litigation by John Simpson, council voted to not have councillor Bosman's in the session due to conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest.
It was concerns over bio or compromise that the attorney client.
Compromising the attorney client privilege. Thank you. So we're back here for the open record to discuss if councillor Bosman's has a conflict of interest or should be part of this executive session and if there's still client attorney client privilege issues.
Right. So just, I mean, there was no meaningful discussion about anything we recessed for. We immediately got into this issue that had come up last time and councillor Bosman suggested we come out and do an open meeting. We all supported him in that. And you guys need to deal with it. I can tell you that this executive session is specifically related to litigation threatened over a public records request for an executive session held by the ethics committee. And the ethics committee is considering, and this is all public, is considering a complaint involving communications between councillor Bosman's and John Simpson, among other issues, ethical concerns that have been raised to the ethics board, even outside of those communications. So that's where you're at. And that's as much detail that I can give you in an open meeting about. I can't give you any legal advice or such kind of stuff yet, but that's just a little bit more detail about what the concerns are.
Wow. And so then if councillor Bosman is in the executive session, and he's part of the conflict that might be coming up, that would be a conflict.
The concern is that things being said in executive session specific to Mr. Simpson or litigation strategy would be shared with Mr. Simpson.
Mr. Bosman's. Hey, oh, by Mr. Bosman's. Okay, yes, okay. Um.
Super, super. I love this. This is an awkward, difficult situation. Time has gone by since your most recent vote. I don't know if that's changed anything in your opinion or not. This is just, you guys have to decide. I mean, I would err on the side of caution without going into too much of my, I mean, there's some things I need to tell you in executive session that are very serious and have an impact on the city's litigation position.
This is not an easy conversation and yeah, obviously you don't want to be put in this situation, but I would just say as a councillor, if it was, sorry to say, but if it was concerning me and my emails, I think it would be a conflict of interest to be in the executive session talking about that. And so do we need to make a motion to not have councillor Bosman's be a part of it? Or how does that work?
If you're not comfortable with Mr. Bos, councillor Bosman's being in the session, you would need a motion with a majority vote to exclude.
Um, I, yeah, I mean, it's hard and I'm sorry and I wish that I like I I'm I'm bummed that we're in this situation and I'm love having you as a part of the table and, you know, pushing discussion and being there. I can also speak. I'm gonna make a motion to exclude councillor Bosman's from this executive session. I need a second or is there a second?
Second.
Any council discussion?
Yeah, I'll make my comment. So first of all, you imply emails. There's multiple emails on many situations with the ethics board that does not include exclude certain challenges. That's a mute point. I think this approach is very inappropriate. As an elected official, I need to be equally informed as other councillors to be able to make educated decisions. If some councillors try and silence another councillor because of differing opinions, then that is concerning and not in line with the democratic process. It seems that some councillors believe I share confidential information or compromise client attorney privileges and that would be so called the basis for excluding me. However, you can believe what you want. It is not true and even more importantly, you are not the judge. There are rules for due process and fair trial before you issue a verdict and exclude a councillor for meeting. You do not have that right. If any resident or anybody in our community asks me for any information, I will provide them with all the information that is not confidential as far as I can. It seems obvious why some councillors go this route as I've been clear that most of these lawsuits should have been prevented by disclosing information, public information, but it ended up differently and we have spent or in my opinion, I would call it wasted. I am guessing over a hundred thousand dollars, even though I have not been able to get a clear information on that. I am all for transparency and access to information and I'm not in favor of inappropriate executive sessions or closed door discussion. With this action that is on the table, I have no choice and will need to hold every councillor accountable and exercise my rights for through any legal means, hearing, sports or whatever, to assure that people that voted for me and our community as a whole are fairly represented. So I will never support this and I think what you're basing your choice on is an error incorrect.
Any other council discussion? Can I have a vote? Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Field? Yes. Mayor Procham Yasi?
Yes.
Councillor Yousef?
Yes.
Councillor Bosman's?
No.
Okay, so.
Motion to reconvene.
Okay, I am gonna make a motion to reconvene into executive set session. Should I read? To receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to C R S twenty four dash six dash four oh two V concerning friend litigation by John Simpson received on April fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Council discussion. Can I have a vote? Councillor Bosman's?
No.
Councillor Yousef?
Yes.
Mayor Procham Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Field?
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff? Counselor Woodruff?
Yes. Okay.
So you didn't make a motion?
Yes.
It's a European carryall.
Immersed. Immersed.
Immersed.
Maybe you need to give one yourself. I don't know yet. We'll see.
Yeah.
Still hasn't grown on quite the other end. Now that I have two people.
Okay, Melissa's in. The time is now 1:41, and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Dave Woodruff, Yildiz Yazi, Melissa Youssef, Mark Morgan, Jose Madrigal, and myself, and Michael Goldman. For the record, council met in executive session to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS CRS 24-6-402B concerning threatened litigation by John Simpson received on April 15th, 2024. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, no decisions were made in executive session. So the next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second. Second. All in favor?